All right, let us stand for, first of all, for a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge. Ready? All right, let us stand for, first of all, for a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge.
Let us stand for the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the Monday, April 6, 2020, School Board Meeting, where we have some members in, here at the District Office, and we also have members chiming in virtually, YouTube, Skype, and I think via the telephone. Just for the record, we have school board members present, myself, Reggie Daniels, school board member Bart Alford, who's present. We also have Ms. Gibson. And via Zoom, by phone, we have Ms. Susie Williamson, and we also have Ms. Bale. Also present, we have Ms. Becky, who's present, and also Dr. Blue here, present physically here at the District Office. For those of you who are chiming in virtually, if you are on a computer, tablet, or phone, press the chat button and send a message indicating you would like to speak. And if you are joining the meeting by phone and would like to speak during the public portion of the meeting, press star nine to indicate you would like to speak. The chair at that time will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Your mic will be unmuted, and you will have three minutes to speak. All right, at this time, I would like to go to item two, point one, amendments to the agenda. And we have permission to advertise changes to policy 5111.01, homeless students. And we will place that down under items for individual consideration, and it will be item 5.2A, 5.2A. All right, Mr. Isaac, do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak? All right. And also, Mr. Isaac is here for the record with IT Department, and he has indicated that no one from the public would like to speak at this time. So we'll move on to items for, the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
I second that.
Okay, for the record, it was properly moved to accept the consent agenda items by Ms. Gibson, and it was seconded by Ms. Williamson. Would there be any need for discussion? All in favor signify by saying, "I approve."
I approve.
Okay, I tell you what, I will call your name, and then we'll do it that way. Ms. Gibson.
I approve.
Mr. Alford.
I approve.
Ms. Williamson.
I approve.
Ms. Bale.
I approve.
And just for the record, I approve. Five zero, motion carried. Items for individual consideration. 5.1, student field trips out of county, Ms. Joseph.
Mr. Chair, at this time, we do not have any request for out-of-school field trips for students.
Okay, 5.2, staff trips, Ms. Joseph.
Mr. Chair, at this time, we have no request for out-of-school, out-of-district field trips for staff.
Okay, 5.2A, permission to advertise changes to policy 5111.01, homeless students, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, Mr. Chair, at this time, we had to revisit this homeless policy, and what happened when DOE did their Title IX monitoring, they gave us changes to make, and we're just cleaning up our books, and so we need to advertise it for the required number of days, and then we'll bring it back to vote on for approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion to advertise policy 5111.01?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to advertise the policy change.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, sounds like Ms. Williamson made the motion, and Ms. Bale gave the second. Would there be a need for discussion on the matter? All in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Mr. Alford?
I approve.
Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bale?
I approve.
And I also approve to advertise the changes to the policy. Five zero for the record. All right, 5.3, job description, Ms. Joseph and Mr. Blue.
Mr. Chair, I am submitting a job description for a new position, and this comes about, as you know, Mr. Rowland has been an IT person for many years, and he's basically, these past few years since Mr. Goya has been on staff, he's been working on the student system side. Ms. Hall has been working heavily with student system, both of those. Mr. Rowland will be retiring at the end of this year, Ms. Hall has retired. And so, we're going to take that position and combine it into one position, and with the assistance of the Technology Department and the Curriculum Department, we're going to make one position out of that. We would like to make one position out of that.
What is the pay range?
It would be on a supervisor, it would be less than Mr. Rowland is making.
So his position will be eliminated, then, basically?
What do we say, eliminate or phase, it would be phased into this position?
Into that position.
Yes, should we combine with another position? And we will, we eliminate two positions, and we're downgrading from what Mr. Rowland is, it's lower than his pay rate. It will be on a supervisor scale.
Okay.
And we do not need it until next fiscal year. I just want to get it started early. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you don't have a name for the position?
We do have a name, it's on the Student Information System Supervisor.
It's, I'm just, I'm just going to be very, from this point forward, of course, we've been very cautious, I think, with the money, but I'm actually wanting to best to be more cautious. I mean, with what's going on, and I'm a little leery of adding anything, but this doesn't, I realize what we're doing here, though. But I just, I want us to be very mindful of how we spend the money from this point on. Which we've been doing that, but we just want to keep on doing it.
Okay, so are we going, needing to vote to approve?
Approve this new position.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the position?
I move to approve this position, the new position.
And I think actually you're approving the position and the job description.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we do it all in one?
We can do it all in one.
Okay, I move to approve, I move to approve the new position and the job description.
I second it.
Okay, Ms. Bale, okay, have a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Ms. Bale. Would there be a need for discussion? All in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Mr. Alford?
I approve.
Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bale?
I approve.
And I also approve, five zero, motion carried, job position and job description has been approved. 5.4, resolution to grant emergency powers, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, Mr. Chair, at last, at our last board meeting, you actually voted to grant the superintendent emergency powers, but we did not have the documentation to support that, so I'm presenting documentation to that, to support the previous motion that you've made.
Okay.
And so, since we didn't have this document, so do we want to actually approve this document?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be appropriate. You've got, and if I can just give you a little background, if you'll go, it's, there's a resolution there that I prepared. The resolution, and if you look at the bottom of page one, we already have a policy, policy 0132, and that policy says that in the cases of an emergency, the superintendent may suspend any part of these policies and procedures, and then gives, and says that, but the superintendent has to report that fact to the board. That's already in our policies. What this resolution does is it declares that an emergency has occurred, and that the duration of the emergency will be the duration of the governor's executive orders 20-91 and 20-92. Those are set to expire, I believe, well, I don't want to guess, but they're set to expire here in, I think, 30 days or so. They may well be extended, and of course, this would extend, would likewise extend if the governor chose to extend it. I think it's a, it's a good idea to have this resolution because then there's no question that the superintendent has the authority given her by policy 0132.
Okay.
I make the, Mr. Daniels, I make the motion to approve the resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution made by Mr. Alford, sounds like seconded by Ms. Williamson. Would there be a need for discussion on the matter? All in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Mr. Alford?
I approve.
Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bale?
I approve.
And I also approve, five zero, motion carried to adopt the resolution to grant emergency powers. 5.5, staffing table, Mr. Blue.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's just good to be in the house and seeing everyone look well today. I'd like for item 5.5 to be approved at this time.
We don't have a staffing table?
Staffing table.
You showing one? I'm not showing one.
I'm not showing one.
We don't have any changes at this time.
Okay, okay, just for the record, there are no changes to the staffing table.
So we don't need to?
So we, yeah, nothing to approve, basically. Okay, we'll move on to personnel changes.
All right, brother chair and board, I ask for item 5.6, personnel changes to be approved at this time.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I move to approve the personnel changes.
All right, motion by Ms. Gibson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alford. Do, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Mr. Alford?
I approve.
Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bale?
I approve.
And I also approve, five zero, for the record, personnel changes have been accepted and adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blue.
Thank you.
We also have requests to advertise, I don't know if you had that in front of you at this time?
The, was it pertaining to the?
Positions.
Positions.
Okay.
For next year.
Okay, okay.
Did it get posted?
So I think, Mr. Chairman, if you want to consider that, you'd need to amend the agenda. Now, in, and if you find good cause, you can amend the agenda to take care of that. But now, we already had our public comment, so I think if you amend the agenda, you're going to have to reopen public comment to see if anyone wants to comment on that. What would probably be appropriate, and since there are no documents in the, in the agenda, is if you chose to amend the agenda, go ahead and amend it, let Dr. Blue present what he's talking about, and then open it up.
Open it up.
So that way, everybody would know.
Can I go make copies?
Okay. Need copies? And I guess it wouldn't be fair to the ones on the phone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it just going to ask for a pre?
Okay, at this time, we're going to amend the agenda to open, for it to be 5.6A. What will happen is Dr. Blue will present the positions to advertise, and then we will give the public a chance to comment on those, on that action. And then, from there, after that, we'll vote. Okay, so it'll be 5.6A, and at this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Blue to present.
All right, thank you, brother chair and board. These are positions that I'm requesting that we advertise for next year. Principals for Madison County High School, Madison County Central, and for Greenville Elementary School. Also, school counselors for Madison County High School and Madison County Central School. And the position that Ms. Joseph talked about earlier, the student information supervisor for the district. Bookkeeper for Madison County High School. Teachers for math, middle school and secondary, and elementary teacher pool for various subjects.
And Dr. Blue, these are, you're going to advertise for these positions. These positions are all supposed to start at the beginning of the next fiscal year, July 1.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, looking back over to our IT department, Mr. Isaac, do we show anyone from the public who would like to say anything, or, okay? All right, well, we, do we have a motion to advertise the positions?
I make the motion to advertise Dr. Blue's requested positions for the upcoming school year.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Alford, seconded by Ms. Gibson, would there be a need for discussion? All in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Mr. Alford?
I approve.
Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bale?
I approve.
And I also approve, five zero, the motion carried to advertise the positions.
Yes, sir, thank you. Also, for your information only, we have, you know, we have the executive order from the governor from employees that have health problems, that they can't work. And we're taking this very, very serious here at Madison County School District at this time. As you know, we have 11 cases here in Madison at this time. And just, you know, print it out for your records of the employees here that are out due to this. So I just want you to have that for informational only purposes. They don't have it? Okay, well, I will give you a copy of this, where you can have it for your information only. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, boy, thank you, brother chair.
Thank you. Okay, 5.7, monthly financial report.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes, Ms. Joseph, I guess.
Okay, well, the show must go on, and we have our financials, our financial reports from February, remember, our financial reports is usually presented at the last meeting of the month. In March, we did not meet, therefore, that's why you're just getting February financial reports. With the help of Ms. Floyd, Claire Floyd, she was able to replicate the same format that Mr. Byrne had been using. Basically, we're holding our own, okay? We're not overflowing with money, but we're not in a financial, ready to call the cops again yet, okay? So we're, we're holding our own, and we are closely monitoring our spending, all spending. We carefully scrutinize our spending. We don't have any fluff going around, but we're taking care of the needs of the district.
Right.
Do, with, with the upcoming budget coming up, and I know Ms. Ely just started, do we need to, like, maybe contract with someone to help her build the budget, or how is that going?
I need to have some private conversation about that.
Okay, I mean, I just, if, if you feel that she needs it, I mean, I'm only one board member, but I would be, I would think it would be something that we should consider as a board to make sure that we get our budget built.
I'm going to have a private conversation, and I'll bring that back, specific back to the table at the next meeting. The budget was finally released, but it was released at the onset of this COVID-19 dilemma. And so, I've been having conference calls basically two or three times a week, and I think they're going to revisit the budget, so.
I'm afraid that we could have money taken by, I mean.
I think we will, so I don't want to get that deep into it. I've got another conference call tomorrow, the center for input, and so we will probably get more directions about that.
Okay.
But we have not forgotten about it, we are thinking about it.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Floyd for helping me get this financial report together.
Okay, so it was informational only, pretty much?
No, that's official, that's our official report.
Okay, okay.
Yes, this is official.
Okay, all right, well, do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
That's for the February.
For February?
I make the motion to approve the financial report for February.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Alford, seconded by Ms. Williamson, would there be a need for discussion?
I'd like to thank Ms. Claire Floyd for her input in this, we appreciate what she's doing. And what Ms. Joseph is doing, too.
All right, all in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Mr. Alford, Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bale?
I approve.
And I also approve, five zero, motion to approve the financial report for the month of February. All right. Like we're near the finish line, superintendent items.
Okay, the superintendent has placed several items at your place of receipt, and for our members that's not present, I will have a packet for you. I want you to know that we've been very busy, okay? We've been playing a shell game, and we've been keeping up with it. It's changing every day what we're doing, but I want to share with you several documents that we have shared with our staff. One of the first things we shared is this flyer from Internet Essentials, Affordable Internet, because several of our families do not have internet. Now, this is limited, this is only through Comcast. But if a person did not have internet, they were able to get two free months of internet through Comcast, and they have increased their speed. Okay, another thing is, and it's not in a particular order, a big thing that's been going on is about the Family Medical Leave Act plus Families First Coronavirus Virus Response Act. It's that Family Medical Leave, FMLA Plus, and this is the summary of it, okay? And this was shared on the website as well as with all of our employees. The next is that we know we get executive orders, two days later, we get the guidance. And so, this is a guidance from the executive order, from the last executive order. Again, there's a lot in there, and so that's one of the reasons we do something one day and have to switch over one, because this contradicts some of the things that we heard in a webinar, but we can deal with it. We are feeding our kids every day, and with this new executive order 2091, it put a little strain on us, but as I told you, we've got two goals, to keep our staff and students safe and to continue learning. Okay, keeping them safe, part of that is also making sure that we're feeding them. And on this sheet, you see by day the different sites that we're delivering food to or letting them pick it up, and the number of people, and these numbers are. And these numbers are holding steady. I don't know why they go down on Friday. But what our highest number of food we serve was 658. And we're still doing that daily, and so the kids are expecting that. We've had to change some of cooking sites because on the sheet that Dr. Blue shared with you, after we looked at the people with the various health issues, Madison County Central School was left with one person to cook. And so the high school, and I applaud their effort, they have taken on doing all the food preparation for all of the Madison locations. And why that's so important is that these foods have to be cooked and packaged and ready to get out the door by 10:30. Okay? And when I say packaged, they have to put them in karate containers, and then they put them in a plastic bag, one of those plastic grocery bags, and tie them up so the people that's handling them are not putting their hands on the food. So that's, it entails all of that, but they are able to get it out of the door by 10:30 every morning. The next form is a form that Mr. Goyet often used with the students, with the parents when they checked out the devices. We have, and so as I asked him earlier, we have loaned out over 1,200 devices. Another device is that, and we learn as we go. We put together a document, teachers' guidelines and handbooks. This was the best that we could do with what we had because you understand this was put on us at the last minute. We did this within one week's time. And we have given the teachers guidelines. We tell them, "We're not perfect. Talk with us. Let us know whether you have any concerns." But this is what we have. If they have some positive suggestions, share them with us. We will listen to them. Okay, this is also posted on the website for the teachers.
Would you mind going over what information is on that website in regard to the teacher information?
May I finish this right here?
It's all...
Okay, may I finish this?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, I've got one other document. The document that we truly put together in one week was our instructional continuity plan for emergency school closures. And we had to submit it to DOE, and our chancellor, Oliva, he did approve it. We had to submit it for approval. Again, it's not perfect, but it suffices. Remember, we are trying to continue education, not remain stagnant. It's our duty to educate these kids, and we've got a plan in place. No, everyone does not have a device, and that was one of the reasons we were loaning some devices out. In Madison County, also, even if you have an device, everyone does not have access to internet. And so we're also doing paper and pencil packets. And we do let the parents make a choice whether they want the paper and pencil packets or the internet packet. They do not... I try to stay out of the nitty-gritty running of the school, but some people use one or the other, and some people use a combination of both. Now, all of this, all these items are on the internet. They're on the websites. We've got them on our district website, and most schools have them on their websites. The schools, they list their teachers and the teacher contact information. Now, what we've done about the teacher contact information is that we know several people are leering, are giving out their telephone numbers. Okay? Because once you use your telephone for business, it becomes a public document. It can be sanctioned. And so someone shared with me that they could get a Google Voice number, and so they could actually use their telephone number and get another number to use which they could share with the teachers. That was one method. Also, Mr. Goyet reminded the teachers that they could forward their office, their classroom office telephone to their home phone. And so that's two different methods. They can use two different telephone numbers, but they are required to give the families and students a telephone number so they will be able to contact them as well as use their email address. As Ms. Gibson was saying, this information is on the web for our parent and as well as Facebook. And if they don't, if they don't have, if they have trouble doing that, we have personnel at school. They can call and we can walk them through it. We understand that this is not a perfect plan, but we are there to assist them. Their first line of duty would be to try to call a teacher. If they can't call the teacher, call the administrator. If they didn't call the district office, which they do. But we are addressing their needs. We're busy, but we're working.
I want to compliment you on all the hard work because this is ever-changing every day and all the work into the continuity plan. The one thing that I would ask is the phrase that keeps going back that we use, "A good faith effort and have compassion," and in that, that the teachers would have compassion in assigning work to multiple students with multiple classes to take into account that there's only so many hours in the day that they have. And I'm sitting here as one that's always been an advocate for doing all we can to push them with rigor that we can, but I don't know at this point, at this time we're in right now with this pandemic, that this is the time to put our rigor on the table in that we're going to make this where it's this many hours of homework each night. That's not fair to the parents. It's not fair to the children. And again, I go back to the question. I've had complaints on the amount of time that parents and children are having to spend nightly on these lessons. And the statement that keeps going back is, "We don't understand that we didn't do it through the school year. We didn't have this caliber of work, with this rigor of work." And again, that's the thing I'm asking is that the teachers, if you do have a high school class, that you be cognizant that if there's six different classes, there could be six different assignments. And like, for instance, last week, this one teacher gave 139 pages of an assignment. That's a lot of work out of one class, and you have other classes to do too. I mean, it's not, and again, students can only do what they can do, and at a certain point, I don't know, I mean, it's not fair to them nor their parents. And that's the thing I'm asking, that we be cognizant that stress is high right now, and parents are under a lot of stress and tension. And for parents who are not having to work, they can work with their child at home. But for your parent who's working to 5 o'clock, they come home and they have five, six hours of homework to get that night or work to do. That's a lot of extra stress that's on the parent. And I'm just asking that we as a district be, the teachers be aware that, especially if you have multiple teachers for the student, that we're not setting them up for failure. And I could see that happening.
I'd like to add something. Were you finished?
Yes.
I'd like to also add on to that, that they have multiple children at home. Now, it's one thing in the elementary school, but when the child reaches high school, they have six or seven different teachers there, which they're all going to give different assignments. So I'd like them to just think of the word moderation. You know, give an assignment, but let's not go overboard on it. And of course, we don't give the assignments.
Right.
We're not in charge of that, but it's just something, I've also gotten some complaints about it. So I'm glad we're addressing it.
Ms. Joseph, do we have like a limit that it can't be over like this many hours a night?
Okay, the guidelines that I have shared with the staff is the statute says that instruction in a standard school should comprise no less than 900 hours for a student. Basically, we are obligated to provide at least 300 minutes of instruction per day per student. Okay, that's in statute. Okay, we have, the teachers are available as well as the parents are available to help answer some questions. I wouldn't want to put all of this on a parent, but we are providing assistance. We're providing phone numbers. That's what the teachers and the parents are supposed to do while they're at home. Not just enjoying home. They are actively working.
I just, I mean, I think that, I don't know so much at the elementary level, but I know at the middle and high school level, if you have multiple teachers and you have teachers that are assigning this quantity of work, it easily could be multiple hours you have a day, multiple. And I just, and it's hard for, when our surrounding counties aren't doing it.
Okay, if you would get me the teachers' names, I will get the principal to look into and see how much, to monitor the amount of work they're doing, making sure that they are doing their lot of time and not someone else's time, but I would need the teacher's name.
I can get those.
And I don't know who you're referring, we're not going to mention the names right now, but I've had this discussion with Mrs. Joseph, and we've talked about it, and she is, she's aware of it.
Well, the principals should be monitoring what's going out anyway, shouldn't they?
Also, the principals are monitoring, this morning, they pulled a report of the amount of time that the kids are spending online, okay? A lot of them are saying they're spending online. So the kids need to make sure, and they need to understand that we can pull the report, Mr. Goyet can pull the report, and see how much time the kids, the students actually spent online.
But the principals, you're saying is they're monitoring what the teachers are assigning? So they should know if 139 pages were assigned?
Yes, they should. I'm sure if someone assigned 139 pages for one class in one day, I'm sure that...
For a week. It was for a week.
That's a lot. I'm sure they're on top of it.
That's my concern over that. I mean, I know that we have to, we have to have a plan, but I just ask that we try to do it with a good faith plan and not trying to be punitive toward people because, I mean, in many instances, we're setting people up for failure with that many hours of work to do.
We're not trying to catch anybody doing wrong. We're trying to encourage them and trying to support them and help with their learning.
And again, if a teacher, the point I'm making is, if a teacher assigns that amount of work in a regular school week, then I have no issue with it. But I can't see, I mean, I don't even know at a college level you would have that much work being assigned in a week.
I can't comment any further because I don't know specifics of that, but once we find out the teacher, I'll have the principal to look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further, Ms. Joseph?
I think that's enough, Mr. Daniel.
All right. Mr. Reeves, you have anything?
No, sir, not unless you have questions with me.
Would any of the board members have anything for Mr. Reeves? Those who are remotely with us? Okay?
No, not for Mr. Reeves.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Okay, thank you. To our employee...
Closing arguments.
Pardon me?
Closing arguments.
I don't know if that's what you want to call this, but, well, I want to say something to our employees of the Madison County School System. I'd like to say thank you, and thank you again for what you're doing. We really appreciate you. You've been able to, you're very dedicated, hardworking, and you're making it happen, and we appreciate you. Lunches are available. I think according to my addition, that was almost 6,000 lunches in the last two weeks, so they've been very busy. I've already discussed our, I've had a couple of concerns, but we've already discussed that, so Ms. Joseph will look into it. And I've always said that, and I was told, that parents are teachers, which they are. Parents are the first teacher, but I don't think we've ever expected the parents to do what they're doing right now. And like Mr. Alvarez said, and if I can add a little bit to it, not all homes are conducive for holding school. You know, it would be nice if they all actually were. We must be realistic and realize not all homes are. And, but I want to thank you again, and I appreciate everything that you're doing, parents. You're appreciated, believe me. Everyone, take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alford?
First off, I would like to wish all the employees a happy Easter with Easter coming up. And continue to practice our safety measures, our precautions, to stay home if you're ill, social distancing, six feet apart, and avoid large crowds. On a positive note, I would like to recognize Heather Douglas, one of our pre-K teachers at Lee. She was featured on WCTV, giving a class demonstration with one of her students on Zoom, and she was featured during the news, and that was nice to see of her instruction. I too would like to thank all the parents and grandparents within the district for the role they've had to step up to this past two weeks of starting this. And again, even for teachers, even for people who are trained as teachers with being thrust into this at home with your children, and they're not at the grade level maybe you're teaching, and they're having their own students, it's overwhelming. And I just appreciate all the family members for what they've done and how they've stepped up to the whole situation. I want to thank Ms. Joseph for her hard work in this ever-changing situation we're in, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more changes before we get back to us being back in school. But again, just thank all the employees for what they've done so far.
Thank you. Ms. Williamson, would you have closing remarks?
I do. I want to thank Ms. Joseph for her superb leadership through this most trying time. And also, all of our employees, and I do mean all of them, for what they're doing to help keep things going. They're going far beyond anything that we ever thought that we would have to ask them to do. They're a great bunch of people from every department that we have, and I'm proud that they work for us.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bell?
Yes, I would just like to say I appreciate all the hard work the employees, the students, and the parents are doing to make this work. Keep up the outstanding work, and if you need any assistance, please give me a call. God bless, and everybody stay safe.
Okay, thank you. And I also echo a lot of what fellow board members said a little earlier in regards to our appreciation for all of the staff, hard work that everybody's doing, from superintendent to the HR department, IT, all of the district, all of the teachers who are sacrificing so much and, you know, and doing a whole lot. And the staff, support staff, all around the district was so appreciative. Ms. Becky and just everybody, you know, you get in trouble and you start calling names. But, you know, but one that just kind of stands out, I guess, one group is the one that is responsible for feeding the folks, the kids and the students during spring break, or I guess it was after spring break or what have you. But they're doing a remarkable job. And also, I think one of the board members mentioned about the parents. Kudos to the parents, man. I've been hearing from them. They've been calling, well, been saying, well, jokingly, not so much. All of them were complaints with me, just jokingly, kind of making a little humor out of it that they're about to, you know, get suspended students and expel them and all for, on the first day and everything. But, and one even joked with me about, you know, he had some math problems he was helping his son with, and he almost had to take a walk, you know, after trying to help him and couldn't help him. So let's kind of understand that the parents are trusted in the situation too, and they're kind of, you know, having to make a lot of adjustments as well. But I think all in all, under the circumstances, everybody is doing a wonderful job. And so I just want to encourage everybody to keep up the excellent work. So on that note...
I've got another thing.
Okay, Ms. Joseph, I have one more.
Okay, we are constantly applauding the Food Service Department. I also want to compliment the Transportation Department because they're our silent partners. Believe it or not, they have been... Believe it or not, they have been a big factor in helping serve those meals. And so their, their position was not a position that you could do at home, and so we need to find something for them to do within our system. And so they have gladly taken on that position of assisting the cafeteria workers. And we've got a few others doing some other things. We even had a few of them helping Mr. Goyet when he was passing out all 1,300 of those phone books. But we have been having to act like family, where I need you, that's where you've been. And I appreciate that because we, our numbers are getting smaller and smaller, but the task still must be done, okay? Believe it or not, I do have a vision for this district, and when I asked the teachers to come back on the 23rd, and a lot of them was kinda slow about it, I do understand and I appreciate that. So on April the 13th, which is Good Monday, the teachers were originally scheduled to come back to school, and I have officially given them Good Monday off, and that's in exchange for them coming to school on March 23rd.
Okay. All right, with that said, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Ms. Gibson?
I approve.
Ms., Mr. Alfred?
I approve.
Ms. Williamson?
I approve.
Ms. Bell?
I approve.
And I also approve, with that, 5-0 motion, meeting adjourned.